And welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Committee, the whole meeting this April 16, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting of the Council Committee of the Whole in order with a note that Councilman Blandford is indeed joining us by phone. We have four items to cover this evening: sewer rate study, stormwater rate study, Highway 58 and Viking Road update, and bills and payroll. First up is our Director General for Rodenbeck for the sewer rate study. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things as we were doing the CIP and the budget, one of the things we talked about is that we would be coming back to council at some point to talk about rate increases, whether it's sewer, stormwater, what we have. And so that's where we are for tonight. We do have both, but we're going to start with sewer. I thought I'd go through the presentation. If people have questions, we'll kind of talk about sewer first and then we'll go on to the next item, stormwater. So, what do we do when we do a rate study? Some of the things that we want to do, that we want to accomplish or the purpose of it is, one, we want to review what are the current projects we have going on on the CIP. What's our projected increases in operating costs that we have to afford and pay for? In sewer's case, what are the large projects coming on the horizon? So that's what you'll kind of hear in the theme of this presentation is, is not necessarily what we got going on right now, it's what might be coming ahead. And a lot of that is due to the mandates from EPA. One of the things we do too is review our debt coverage to make sure we have enough revenue and cash to cover our debt payments. And, you know, taking all that to an account, then we have to determine what kind of necessary revenue stream do we have in our fund. So just to give a little bit of background, just to let everybody know where we're at, is we had 5% increase each year for five years for fiscal year 12 through 16. We then implemented a 9% increase each year for three years for FY '17 and FY '19. So we're actually not quite to our last year yet. It'll start this July 1st. It'll be the third year of that. But why we're doing it now and not waiting is we're getting ready to sell bonds and so they kind of go hand in hand. When we look at our revenue bonds and how much coverage we have, they're also going to ask us, Moody's, our creditors, is okay, how are you going to pay for it? And do you have revenue to do that? So that's why they kind of go hand in hand. So we're not suggesting tonight or recommending to change what's for '19. We're just looking ahead, that we know we're going into that last year, so let's do it now and then we'll be talking about what will go into effect then for fiscal year '20. And so I just mentioned that about starting the last year. So what are some projects we have going on right now? One of the big projects that's still going on is the process of finishing up the large Driver and Creek sanitary sewer project. Two years ago when we sold bonds for sewer, that was one of the big projects we were financing at that time. Other projects coming up in the immediate future that will use sewer funding are West First Street. We'll have sewer infrastructure related to that. When we do projects, street projects, when we work on utilities, whether it's water, sewer, stormwater, we expect those funds to pay for those costs from a utility standpoint. So in this case, when we work on West First Street, the amounts for sewer, we will need to have our sewer fund cover. So I have just summarized on this what's shown in the CIP from a total project cost and what those funding sources are. So you can see the sewer amount in the CIP was $720,000. I heard we kind of got a more up-to-date estimate of about $762,000 now. The other thing that we have on the CIP for in the next at least few years is a plant digester rehab. And it's one to update and repair a digester we have. Now, it's a little farther down the road, but one of the things that we wanted to make sure we had funding for is at least the design piece of that. You can see it's a substantial cost. It's $9.6 million. But in this bond sale and what we're talking about now is just the design part of that, the $1.6 million. So what about operating costs? Well, we know we have salaries and benefits for employees. They're going to keep going up. We have spot repairs that we factor in and we budget for each year. So, you know, we have $30,000 to $50,000 that we have in there. Slip lining, a lot of you have heard about that and know we do that. And so we have right now $250,000 a year in that. Mike might tell you, Mike Nyman might tell you that that's maybe not enough to what we do every year, that maybe there's been years we've budgeted $400,000 in that line item. But those are things, again, as we were looking at our cash flow projections, here's some of the operating costs we took into account and just other, you know, we know we just have other normal, you know, plant maintenance items that come up. But again, like we talked about, but really a lot of what we're talking about is what do we got on the future? And we know we have a high cost of possible future projects and so we want to consider that in this rate study. Nutrient removal and requirements by the EPA. Again, a lot of you have heard about this already. Not a new topic. On the CIP, we have $42 million, but honestly, that could be a project that's going to cost 60 to 80 million. We just don't know it this time. But that's also why we're in the process of talking about regionalization too and are there any options there? So again, it's on the horizon, but we also know even if we go to regionalization, there's still a cost to that. So one of the things we want to do in a rate study is, you know, we don't want to just say, well, let's not have rate increases for three or four years and then three or four years, we know we have these costs and now we got to raise them by 30%. You know, we want to have an increase that can cover our, you know, ones we got going on right now, some projects, but also building up some of that cash so we don't have to have such a significant increase in four years. So just other projects, facility master plan update, regionalization study, consultant work if we got to the point where the regionalization that we might have, collection system expansion. So again, even though I highlighted ones that are in the CIP, we know there's other things going on for sewer that we would have requirements for. So that's a little bit about the project side and what we're looking at in terms of projects and costs. So the other thing is, is how much debt do we already have outstanding in the sewer fund? One of the things that I know we talk about a lot here at the city is that our geo debt limit, our debt is extremely low. But what I would like to remind people is, but our sewer fund does have a lot of debt. That doesn't necessarily go against that geo debt, but it does have its own debt. So you can see, here's what we have outstanding right now. So we have some old bonds from '08. This will be their last year. They're paid off. When we sold bonds in 2016, we have about $6.6 million left on those. When we did the big plant upgrade that cost, I want to say it was 17 or 18 million, we got a SRF, State Revolving Loan Fund at the time, to do that. So we still have $5.9 million outstanding on that. And then as many of you know, we internally borrowed to ourselves. So the sewer fund actually owes the Health Trust Fund and Capital Projects Fund $13.2 million. And again, that's why you see the SRF and internal loans. We had that huge project that we did that we could have went and sold bonds at the time and some of you on council at the time, it's, we thought it makes more economic sense to just pay ourselves interest instead of some other big bank to do that. So that's why you see those pretty sizable debt outstanding. So right now in the sewer fund, we have about $26.3 million outstanding. What we're looking at right now that we'll be setting hearings for tonight and we'll be doing our next processes in the bond sale is what would be the new debt for sewer. And what we're looking at is another $2.3 million that we would be selling this year for sewer. And that's covering those two immediate projects I talked about, West First Street and the design for the plant digester. And then again, with the current 26, we're going to be at 28.6. And again, I like to tell people that because I just want to make sure everybody's aware, you know, debt is a huge issue in our sewer fund, but that's why we're looking at rate studies. And again, the problem with sewer is it's not small projects. You know, they're 10 million and 20 million and 40 million and 60 million, that that's what gets complicated with sewer. And again, one of the things we'll have to show when we do our credit presentation to Moody's, when we sell our bonds, is that we do have enough sewer revenue to cover our bond payments. We have to have at least 1.10. We usually shoot for 1.25. That's what they like to see. So in our cash flow analysis, we made sure that the rates we're proposing tonight will have enough coverage on the debt. So rate proposal, what are we talking about? Is currently how sewer rates work, for those who might not know, is it's based on the water you use. We looked at, you know, what are we looking at in projects the next three years? We looked at our operating cost increases. And so what we're recommending tonight is a 5% increase each year for FY '20, '21, and '22. So another three-year increase of 5% each year. So that doesn't necessarily always mean a lot to people. What's 5% mean on my bill? I don't know what that means. Is Cedar Falls Utilities let me know what an average usage was on a residential home and it's 700 cubic feet of water used. So how our rates work now is you have a base rate for the first 200 and then for every 100 over that, there's an incremental rate. So you can see on the left-hand side, I took what an average homeowner would have for a bill at 700 and you can see it comes up to about $35 a month would be the average sewer bill. And again, I'm talking on residential. So what I did is I put in those 5% increases on incremental in the base rate to come up with what they would be over the next three years. So you can see for an average homeowner, what this means is for the first year, my average monthly increase would be $1.78, so a little under $2. By the next year, it gets up to $3.60 and then by the third year, they'd be about $5.50 additional a month. So that's what a 5% increase does for an average homeowner. One of the things we look at too is how do we compare then to other cities? You know, for us, we want to make sure we're being, you know, is it a fair rate? How do we compare from an economic development standpoint, you know, whether it's businesses or homes? City of Ames every year does a very complete study on sewer rates and we've used this in the past. And how it works is they rank them by the highest rate is number one. I always feel like that's opposite, you know, I feel like the lowest should be the highest, but anyway. Clinton has the highest rate in the study, so they're the first, they're number one. There's is like $53. Cedar Falls is 29. And then the lowest rate is $11. So you can see there's quite a bit of, you know, gap in there. So the median is $31, $31 and $57. So as you can see, our current rate, what we would be in '19, what we already have established, we're 25 out of 40. So we're actually on the lower end of the scale and we would be below the median. If you factor in our 5% increases each year for the next three years, you can see we'd be up to like $33. Median's still 31 and we'd be at 20th, which is right in the middle because there's 40. Now, keep in mind, this also assumes nobody else in that study raises their rates for the next three years, which is probably not going to happen. A lot of people are in the same situation we are. So again, it just kind of shows that I would guess with ours that we're, that 25 out of 40, I would guess we're going to stay about the same just because other people are going to be raising their rates as well. But even if nobody did, we're still right in the middle. So in summary, again, things we wanted to accomplish is make sure we have enough debt coverage for immediate projects. But we wanted to do a cash flow that also builds up some cash reserves to finance immediate projects and looking ahead to future projects. Again, our hope would be is by building that up, we don't have to have such an extreme increase if it's five years down the road or whatever we would need to do from a compliance So again, it's only a three-year recommendation. You know, I think for us, that's why a few years ago, we only did three years as well. I think it gives you an opportunity to at least get a rate in for a few years, but when there's so many unknown factors about that big number sitting out there, we don't want to commit ourselves too far. So what we would do then is reevaluate in three years, the spring of 2022, our next restructure to finance future large projects. Obviously, I'll take questions, but what will end up being the motion, Mayor, is that we'd be looking at if we're fine with the 5% increases, then the motion would be to start drafting up the ordinance for the sewer rate increases and then of course, that would come back to council, those three readings of the sewer rate increases.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer tonight? Comments?
Yeah, William, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Director Rodenbeck, do you know for Clinton and Iowa or the Great Lakes regions, do we have any information about or understanding of what makes their rates so different, like any kind of lessons learned for us?
Well, the easy answer is probably no, we don't. Because one of the things you always have to keep in mind when you're trying to compare these is, I don't know if some of those cities supplement their sewer fund with their general fund. Some of those cities might levy their debt out of the debt service levy and not the sewer fund where we make this, you know, the sewer to us is an enterprise fund. It should be self-supporting, so it should pay its own debt. Some of those could do that. I mean, it's, so it is complicated from a standpoint, there could be a lot of combinations in there that we don't know.
So safe to say it's not an apples-to-apples comparison?
It isn't. Now, you try to do the best you can and at least show, okay, about where we're at and how do we compare, but first to say that we know it's not perfect either.
Anything further for Jennifer? There is, I'd asked for a motion to continue with the draft ordinance towards the sewer rate.
Is that moved?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you for that and you're up next with the stormwater.
Just hitting you all at once tonight, I guess. Okay, so moving on to stormwater, I guess. One of the things that we're going to talk about that's maybe a little different about stormwater is, you know, sewer, as I keep talking about, is a lot of those big projects. Stormwater has a lot of little projects. You know, it's a lot of those 300,000, 200,000, not that those are small, but in comparison to 40 million, they sound small. So that's one of the things that we're going to talk about is a little bit different about stormwater as compared to sewer. So again, same kind of purpose we already talked about with sewer. We want to look at what's our current projects on the CIP, what's projections and operating costs and, you know, what's the necessary revenue stream to afford those projects? So just to really kind of summarize the CIP and what's on there is, in the current CIP, there's over 4.1 million in stormwater projects. Again, many of you may recall when we talked about the CIP that we knew a lot of those projects was going to mean probably a rate increase if we were going to be able to do all those. And, you know, there's also things that we didn't even have on the funded list on the CIP. We had to move them over to the unfunded list because we weren't sure what all we were going to be able to afford. And again, like I just talked about, and a lot of those things on the CIP are just a lot smaller scale when compared to sewer. So just to kind of break it down a little bit, what's on the CIP is bridges and culverts. We have seven of those listed on the CIP. They might range from a $300,000 cost to a $1.2 million cost, but you'll see on the CIP, those are all things that are coming up in the next few years. Other things we have that are stormwater related on the CIP, we have bio-retention sales, swales, permeable alleys, drainage, watershed studies. We have a lot of different things on the CIP. So again, it was harder to kind of highlight what all the projects are comparison to sewer. Sewer had a few and this is a handful of a lot. And so these other kind of miscellaneous projects are 14 projects that total 2 million. Same thing, we not only want to look at the capital cost, but we want to look at the operating cost. So again, we know we have salaries and benefits of employees who are charged to the stormwater fund. We have just kind of your normal maintenance items that are going on in the stormwater. And again, we talked about studies on the CIP are to do various drainage studies. Now, what's not on the CIP then is what might those studies show us? Are there then improvements that are going to come out of those that we don't have anything on the CIP right now? Also, what do we have for future? I think we know there's still going to be a need for stormwater projects. I don't think it's anything that's probably going away in the near future, at least that's what the engineers tell me. But also, I know people have been interested in the permeable alleys. What's in the funding right now is about, to be able to fund about one or two alleys a year currently. And then just, I wanted to step back and just kind of give a little bit of history of the fund. I mean, '07 was the first year we established the stormwater fee. So just a little over 10 years that we've been collecting the fee. We've had no changes in that fee since '07, but a lot of it's just because we didn't need it. The first few years, we were really kind of building up some cash. I mean, we were doing the fee, but we didn't really know all the projects we had yet to do. And now that's kind of where we're at, is the fund is self-supporting, but we're starting to see that drawdown now of cash because of the projects listed on the CIP. So again, through the upcoming bond sale, part of that bond sale, about a million of it will be for the stormwater projects. So rate structure, it's not quite as easy or maybe, I don't know what's how you look at it, how it compares to sewer, but how it works now is for every residential property in Cedar Falls, they're charged a flat $3 rate. Doesn't matter how big your house is, how big your lot is, it's $3 a month. And it's the same for all residential properties. Now, on the commercial industrial side, how it works is it's calculated the amount of impervious area you have. So your roof, your parking lot, you know, whatever you have that it's impervious area on your property. And how that works now is it's $3 base rate, same as residential, but then you pay an additional $5 per 10,000 square feet of the impervious area. So if you have square feet between 0 and 10,000, you're paying $5 plus your base rate of $3. So the minimum a commercial property would pay would be $8. If you have, let's say between 10 and 20, you're going to be paying then the $10 plus $3 to get your base rate. Now, what's difficult, and we'll get to this, is it's hard also to compare, just like we talked about sewer. It's maybe not exactly apples-to-apples sometimes, but what's kind of hard is that some people, other communities use what they call ERU method, Equivalent Residential Unit, and that's how they calculate it. So we'll kind of show you how that compares, but again, keep in mind, it's also not perfect in trying to figure that all out. So what we're recommending for stormwater based on this tonight is a 5% increase for four years. And those would actually start immediately, we would be looking at July 1st this year. Remember sewer, we still have a third year to go, but we would be looking at, starting here, this July 1st. And right now, we're proposing no change in how we're calculating. It would still be a flat rate for residential and then based on impervious area for commercial. So again, what does that mean for the average homeowner? You know, you say 5% and maybe that seems like a lot, but when it's $3 a month, keep in mind for the first year, that goes up to $3.15, 3.31, $3.48, and then by the fourth year, we get to $3.65. So it's 65 cents per month more for each residential unit, so an annual increase by that fourth year would be $7.80 for a year. That would be an increase on a residential home. Statewide average, I had it in your packet, is $4. We got that from the Stormwater Education Partnership. So that's the average statewide is $4. So you see that we still would be below that average. Now, understand it's an average, there's people below, there's people above the $4. But again, we would be at $3.65. Now, on the commercial side, again, a little bit harder to look at, but we took what's an average-sized commercial property. In other words, let's not take the big one, you know, let's not take a big distribution center property or take a really small one downtown, what would be like an average commercial property? And we just kind of looked at what some various ones were and 50,000 square feet of impervious area is kind of what we would call an average commercial property. You know, ones we looked at were like, you know, Walgreens or Peppers, Bar Girl, you know, again, we were kind of trying to think of what are kind of as an average size to look at. So again, how it works currently is, so they're at 50,000, so you have the five times the $5 at $25 plus the base rate of three, so they're paying $28 a month now. Adding that 5% onto the base and the incremental rate, the average monthly cost for commercial would get up to $1.40 the first year and by the fourth year, it'd be $6 a month for, again, an average-sized commercial property. And then the annual cost in that first year would be just a little under $17 and then eventually get to $72 a year, again, on an average-sized commercial property. So looking at how that works too is we wanted to look at that statewide average and it shows $4.58 per ERU. Now, and then it also showed what's the average ERU, that Equivalent Residential Unit. So that's 3,442 square feet. So keep in mind, our rate gets up, you know, to that incremental rate, but it's on 10,000 square feet. So you have to kind of keep in mind that our rate, let's say it was double that, we are allowing it on more impervious area, square feet. Hopefully, I didn't make that too complicated, but, so again, it's always hard to kind of compare. So again, we just pulled out a few to look at. So we pulled out Ankeny, $4, it seemed straightforward, $4.50 per 4,000 ERU. So their rate comes up to $56 that they would be paying. And so coming back to where we were at, you know, we were going to be at, you can see just about $34 there by the fourth year. So kind of keep that in mind when we're talking about these rates. And then we looked at Dubuque. They were $6.81 and why we wanted to pick Dubuque is there's is a high one, but then it's also a very low ERU at 2,917. So we're just kind of curious how that worked. So we took the 50,000 and based it on their calculation and showed $116 for commercial Iowa City was a little bit more like us, in other words, that they had a base rate, then they had two dots, then they had like an increment rate too. So that's why I thought it'd be good to compare to them. And you can see they're, they came out pretty close to us at the $36. So again, you know, it's just that keeping in mind, we have that bigger denominator in the 10,000, but maybe our rate looks higher from a commercial standpoint. So in summary, you know, same kind of thing, we wanted to make sure we had cash coverage for currently funded projects and the CIP still maintains a residential rate that's below the statewide average. And so again, we'd be looking at tonight a motion, Mayor, for implementing a 5% increase each year for the next four years for the stormwater rate.
Any questions for Jennifer on this one?
If I may, I'll put you on the spot here. We talked about this a little bit, but back when this was first implemented, there were fair, at least a couple neighborhoods that were concerned that they don't have any storm sewer features other than standard drainage. So can you explain some of the variables or challenges with how we chose to set this up?
Sure. And you're exactly right. You know, when we started this fee 11 years ago, whatever, had those same kind of questions or, you know, it was not even by neighborhood and infrastructure, but it's, you know, we have lots of houses that are maybe three times the size as other houses in Cedar Falls, you know, and do we want to do buy a square footage of the size house too? And I think in all of that, we saw there was just going to be a lot of complications for what might be a minimal difference in the monthly fee. And now as it relates to your specific question, you know, I know one of the things, you're right, we heard that about concerns about, well, that doesn't seem fair, I have to pay a stormwater fee each month, but I don't have stormwater infrastructure in front of my house. You know, I think the things we look at is we always have to keep in mind in the stormwater fund is, you know, it's not just about the pipes, you know, it's again, it's about, we have box culverts we're doing, we have drainage basins, we have creek maintenance we're doing to make sure we all have that, keeping that quality of the water. So I think what also gets complicated in that is, and how far do you do that? You know, if there's stormwater on a street, is that just for the people on that street or is it one block over then or two blocks over? And I think it's a lot of trying to complicate and defend why this house pays more than that house for maybe what's, again, what do you, why do we want to make it complicated for what might be a $3 rate versus a $4 rate? Because I think we would still make sure every residential property would pay Because I think we would still make sure every residential property would pay some kind of rate, because they are, you know, they do have stormwater issues and contributing to our whole stormwater basin as well. So does that help?
Are there any other variables as far as why we wouldn't look at using the ERU? It looked, seemed like across the state.
Well, I think for us, I think, you know, at first, I think we thought, well, yeah, we should go to ERU, that way we can compare ourselves. Well, then the more we thought about it, we're like, well, but aren't we kind of really doing that already a little bit by, I mean, we're just saying it's 10,000 square feet of impervious area, but in some ways, isn't that kind of what we're doing? And then what the biggest challenge about that is, because like I said, John, Chase, and I talked about that, was our biggest challenge is, is you have to remember, when we implemented the fee in '07, we calculated everybody's impervious area at the time. And then since '07, every time there's a new property, we calculate the impervious area, we send it over to CFU so they know at scale. So the problem about changing it now, let's say we go to ERU of 3,000, we're going to have to go back and calculate those, or find all of our calculations, and then change it to 3,000, and we kind of thought, well, do we really need to do that? Or are we kind of really doing it? It's just, we say 10,000, and other people are using 3,000, or 6,000, or 4,000, that in some ways, it's kind of the same method, they just call it ERU instead. So we kind of thought, again, I don't know if that's really worth it to us.
Anything further for Director Rodenbeck?
Does the stormwater fund cover ponds in the city that are silting in, and we have to do something with those, or dry run creek rehabilitating, or that sort of thing, or where does that money come from?
Well, and I might have to need the help of some engineering, but I would guess it kind of depends what the project is.
Right, that, it's going to depend on the project. Like in a residential area now, for the most part, those detention basins are, we have a maintenance and repair agreement where if they silt in, it's the responsibility of sometimes the homeowners association or the developer, and if they're silt in and they're not being cleaned out, then those maintenance repair agreements can give the city the forcefully have the developer or homeowners association clean those. And in a, in a stream channel, it's going to depend on who owns it, so it's just going to vary a little bit depending on the property owner, but, so it can go multiple, multiple directions.
Anything further? We're looking for a motion for have staff draft ordinance for the stormwater.
So moved.
Move in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Nice job. Up next is Stephanie Sheets, Director Sheets, is that correct?
For the Highway 58 and Viking Road presentation, we're going to have Erin Moniza from both give a presentation about the project.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, let me get this. Great. I'm here, which everyone I'm sure is extremely excited about, to talk about more construction, so. Yes, thank you. All right. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's having a good night. I'm here to talk a little bit about the Highway 58 Viking Road construction project and just give an update, is, I'm sure everyone is well aware, some things have been happening out there. You may be asking why I'm doing this. Well, this is, first and foremost, this is actually an Iowa DOT project in partnership with the city, and I am actually working with the Iowa DOT on this and helping them on the management and administration on the construction side. So I was fortunate enough to be able to come and speak with you here this, this evening and tell you what's been going on. You can see here up on the screen are just some images, I would hope that these are things that the council has seen before and what is actually going to be built out there. But we are reconstructing the intersection. There's going to be a new bridge that will carry Viking Road traffic over 58 with a number of, a number of other project elements, some major retaining walls, aesthetics, and of course, the, the common utility improvements that happen in a, in a project like this. So this is what is actually going to be built here once we, once we finish. But let me tell you a little bit about what's been going on here since we've started here just not even two weeks ago. So as an overview here, the, the project is scheduled to be constructed over the next two years, so all of this year and then all of next year primarily. Traffic will remain open on both Highway 58 and Viking Road during all phases of construction, including maintaining access to all the businesses during construction as well. What has, what is going on right now, and what you've seen here in, like I said, roughly the, not quite two weeks, we started the project back on March 28th officially, and there's been a number of work with temporary pavement, work on the signal systems, a number of work moving some of the utilities out there, out of the way, and what that is really doing is kind of building towards our first major traffic shift, which is coming up here scheduled for April 27th, which I will show you some information on here in just a moment. The, to really get some traffic set up in, in a manner that you'll see for a good portion of 2018. So I know this is maybe a little bit hard to see, but what is shown here on the screen is, is our first major traffic shift. Again, that is tentatively scheduled to occur on April 27th. That will happen actually real early in the morning, so during kind of non, kind of non-business hours, as is dictated in the, in the contract documents. But essentially, what we're going to be doing here is the, all of the traffic on 58 is going to be moved into the southbound lanes in a head-to-head manner. We'll have turn lanes at the intersection with Viking, and that traffic will actually remain there pretty much all year long. On Viking Road, what we're going to do is we're going to start by pushing traffic into the westbound lanes, again, head-to-head, and we'll construct the east, the eastbound side of, the eastbound lanes of 50, excuse me, of Viking first, and then in about the middle of the summer, we're going to flip-flop that, move the traffic over to the other side of Viking, and then construct the other half of Viking Road here in the second half of this summer. Again, what will happen is we'll maintain at all times traffic on 58 as well as on Viking Road, and we'll maintain access to all the businesses, as I mentioned before. So essentially here, when we get to the end of this construction season, we'll pretty much have half of 58 constructed, and we'll pretty much have Viking Road constructed up into, up to the intersection there with 58. And then next year, what will happen is we'll build the other half of 58, and we'll put in the bridge, which will kind of, will take most of all next year. And of course, a little bit later here, this year, I would envision that I'll probably be back to, to give you an update on how things are going and, and an update before we get to that point next year. One of the things I also wanted to just point out, and if you haven't noticed, the DOT has actually identified a number of alternative routes, and they have put up signage across the area, kind of helping direct motorists and, and the traveling public to use some of these alternate routes to help relieve congestion in the project area. These three routes are, the first is, is Highway 218, and that's kind of for folks traveling from the north to the south to, to use that and kind of stay out of the area. We've also got Hudson Road and Green Hill. Again, that's to help folks that are, that need to use Highway 58, again, whether they're coming northbound or southbound, to use that alternate route to, to stay away from the intersection there at Viking. And then finally, to help get folks to the Viking Plaza area, we've identified the Green Hill and Prairie Parkway route. And again, there's signs out there along these corridors, helping direct folks to, to these alternate routes. Now, as far as keeping folks informed, so again, being this is a DOT project, the DOT kind of has two primary modes of communication that they'll be using for this project. The first is their 511 system. So when we have information, whether it's changes in, in traffic, or if something unforeseen happens, we'll push that out through that system via press release. In addition, there is a county Facebook site that the DOT uses, which will also post that information as well. And then we'll also be working closely with Stephanie and John and the engineering staff to feed these same updates for posting on the City of Cedar Falls website, where they've got a dedicated space set up for the 58 Viking Road project. What we'll also do, which is very similar to what we, what was done for University Avenue, is we will create the traffic pattern maps, and example of that here in draft format is shown on the screen. We'll make those available to the public and provide that to the city as well. And again, that will be to keep folks updated on how to get in and out of, in and out of the area during construction. A couple other things related to communication, we did walk the site and visit with all the businesses out there prior to construction, and delivered some information on, on who to contact and kind of what to expect here for this first year. And we also have a public information meeting coming up this Thursday, the 19th, to also talk with folks that are interested in learning a little bit more about construction and what's going to be coming here throughout the rest of 2018. So I'll kind of wrap it up here and then open up for questions, but again, here are the two primary contacts for the project from the DOT, for those of you that, I'm not sure, for those of you that know Ron, Ron Loscher is the District Two Resident Construction Engineer, he's the representative from the Iowa DOT, and then myself, as I mentioned, is a sign of the project and will be the project resident construction engineer, and will be on-site a vast majority of the time throughout these next two years, handling issues as they come up. So I would be, be your primary point of contact from the city if, if things come up that we can help work with and, and work through here during construction. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions or.
Thanks, Senator. Anything from, yes.
Well, you mentioned there's a public meeting on the 19th. Can you give us the time and location for anyone who wants to attend?
It's, so we're going to have, the location is going to be at the Cedar Falls Public Works Building, they're in Conference Room A and B, and that's going to start at 5:30. We're going to have a, just a quick, a real brief presentation, and then we'll, we'll have folks there to answer questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further for Aaron?
Just a comment.
Sure.
That's going to be a mess out there. I hope we advertise quite rigorously the alternate routes. They're going to get through quicker if they take the alternate routes. I've tried some of them, and I know the mess that's going to be there, so anybody who drives that area doesn't have to, and be wise to, and we'd be wise to publish that very well.
Certainly.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Well done. Final item on the agenda this evening is a motion to approve bills and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That does it for this evening's committee, the whole meeting. We'll wait till the top of the hour for the regular city council meeting. Thank you.